All right, good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM on November 15, 2022, and I'm going to call this meeting to order for the City of Iowa City. And roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Weiner.
Here.
All right, and we didn't hear Mayor Alter.
Yes, she did.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure people knew that Mayor Alter, Mayor Pro Tem Alter, is joining us virtually today, and Counselor Thomas, John Thomas, will not be with us. All right, we're going to move on to item number two, Proclamations 2A, the Human Rights Day, and this is going to be read by Counselor Burgess.
Whereas, on December 10, 1948, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights was adopted by the United Nations General Assembly. And whereas, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights Day proclaims, "The inalienable rights which everyone is inherently entitled to as a human being, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, language, political or other opinion, national or social origin, property, birth, or other status." And whereas, at the end of 2021, the total number of people worldwide who were forced to flee their homes due to conflicts, violence, fear of persecution, and human rights violations was 89.3 million. And whereas, if ongoing conflicts remain unresolved and the risk of new ones erupting are not reined in, one aspect that will define the 21st century will be the continuously growing numbers of people forced to flee and the increasingly dire options available to them. And whereas, the number of refugees and forcibly displaced people has swelled to nearly 100 million worldwide, mostly women and children. The United Nations High Commission for Refugees works every day to aid these victims of war, famine, and depression. And whereas, the Johnson County United Nations Association, the City's Office of Equity and Human Rights, the Iowa City Public Library, and the Refugee and Immigrant Association will observe Human Rights Day on Tuesday, December 6, at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room A of the Iowa City Public Library with a panel of refugees now living in Iowa and a representative of UNHCR to discuss refugee rights and how UNHCR helps to protect those rights. Now, I, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim December 10, 2022, to be Human Rights Day in Iowa City, and encourage community members to celebrate universal human rights and promote the value of human rights in our city and state in order to create awareness, education, and an environment of respect and connection for all community members. And to accept this proclamation is the President of the Johnson County Chapter of the United Nations Association, Barbara Eckstein.
And we welcome you to give some words.
Well, I want to say again how grateful I am to the city for partnering with us again on an event. We appreciate the public library support and always the support of the city's Equity and Human Rights Commission.
Thank you. 2B is Transgender Day of Remembrance, and this will be read by Counselor Weiner.
So I actually asked to read this because it seems of particular importance, given some of the hostility at the state level right now. So whereas, Transgender Day of Remembrance is an annual observance on November 20 that honors the memory of the transgender people whose lives were lost in acts of anti-transgender violence. And whereas, in 1999, Transgender Day of Remembrance was founded in order to memorialize the murder of Rita Hester, a transgender woman. And whereas, the Human Rights Campaign tracks annual statistics of violence against people in the transgender community. The latest statistics currently available for 2022 report over 30 transgender or gender nonconforming people fatally shot or killed by other violent means in the U.S. A disproportionately high number of victims are Black and Latinx transgender women. And whereas, Transgender Day of Remembrance is an opportunity to look forward to the future and recommit to ending discrimination and transphobia by amplifying the visibility and voices of the transgender community. And whereas, you can commemorate Transgender Day of Remembrance by attending and/or organizing a vigil on November 20 to honor all those transgender people whose lives were lost to anti-transgender violence and learn about the violence affecting the transgender community. Now therefore, I, Janice Weiner, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim November 20, 2022, to be Transgender Day of Remembrance in Iowa City. The transgender pride flag will be hung at City Hall from Wednesday, November 16 through Monday, November 21. And accepting this proclamation will be Human Rights Commissioner Doug Colash.
My name is Doug Colash. I'm in the Human Rights Commission, pronouns he/him. And on behalf of the Iowa City Human Rights Commission, I accept this proclamation and wish to extend our sincere gratitude to City Council for recognizing the Transgender Day of Remembrance. On November 20, we mourn the transgender Americans we lost this year, as well as the countless other transgender people around the world, disproportionately Black and Brown transgender women and girls, as a result of brutal violence, discrimination, and harassment. These victims, like all of us, are loving partners, family members, friends, and community members. They worked, they went to school, they attended houses of worship. They were real people, people who did not deserve to have their lives taken from them. We have seen a significant increase in anti-trans laws and rhetoric from political readers, leaders across the country, and Iowa is not immune to this tragic and despicable wave of hatred. These so-called leaders have taken aim at transgender children, a group that is already marginalized, a group that is already struggling. Transgender children and LGBT children as a group are much more likely to commit suicide than their peers. The American Academy of Pediatrics reports that more than half of transgender male teens attempt suicide in their lifetime, while 1 in 3 transgender female teens said they had attempted suicide. These are students who are struggling to find a place to belong in their school, and instead of being supported and allowed to participate freely, they've been told they are not welcome or worthy of playing sports with their peers. The anti-trans rhetoric has pervaded the public discourse, and it seeks to dehumanize and demonize our transgender friends and neighbors. The words and attitudes of political leaders have the chilling effect of fomenting and encouraging violence against transgender members of our community. When members of the LGBTQ community are called groomers, or pedophiles, or any number of homophobic and transphobic slurs, it gives credence to hatred and lights the fuse of violence. In the recent election cycle, we have even seen examples of this dangerous speech in our own community of Iowa City. Therefore, I once again wish to thank the members of the City Council for issuing this proclamation and remembrance of the victims of transgender violence. Let it be clear that in Iowa City, we acknowledge and affirm this immutable truth, that trans men are men, transgender women are women, and that all humans have the right to freedom, justice, and joy. Thank you.
Thank you. 2C is USS Iowa SSN 797 Submarine Day, and this proclamation will be read by Counselor Taylor.
Whereas, the state of Iowa has a rich history of supporting the U.S. Armed Forces, and the residents of Iowa have answered the call to serve our nation since 1846. And whereas, the U.S. Navy has designated the 24th ship of the Virginia-class attack submarine to be named USS Iowa SSN 797. And whereas, this warship will continue to build upon the proud legacy of the rich history of the previous three warships named Iowa, BB-4, BB-53, and most recently, BB-61, the Big Stick. And whereas, USS Iowa SSN 797 is currently under construction in Groton, Connecticut, with an estimated commissioning date of summer of 2023. And whereas, the USS Iowa will be the first nuclear-powered submarine purposely built to accommodate both female enlisted and officer crew members. And whereas, this warship will be in service for over 30 years, serving our country and representing the great state of Iowa. And whereas, the Commissioning Committee of the USS Iowa seeks to bring recognition to the crew and the vessel and strive to establish a connection between the vessel and the residents of Iowa. Now therefore, I, Pauline Taylor, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim November 15, 2022, to be USS Iowa SSN 797 Submarine Day. And we very proudly say, accepting is United States Navy veteran Caleb Schneider.
Caleb.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all, Mayor Teague, especially, this means a lot to me. As an Iowa City native, grew up here pretty much my whole life until I left for the Navy back in 2012. Moved back to the state last year with my family and live just down the road now in Tiffin. So thank you all. Being a submarine veteran with Veterans Day just behind us, this is a special moment. And with the USS Iowa being the first submarine named after our state, and as was stated, the fourth naval vessel named after our state, I think this is a very unique thing for us. I think it's safe to say that this is the first and last submarine that we will see named after our state, for our lives at least. And I think it really represents Iowa well by, they really had to do some reengineering of the ship to accommodate the male and female crews for both officer and enlisted crew members. So I think that really represents our state, and I'm proud to be an executive director of the Commissioning Committee. So thank you very much, and have a great night.
We will move on to items 3 through 7, which is our consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved. Weiner.
Second. Taylor.
All right, moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Please step up to the podium. If you are online, please raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you. Seeing no one, council discussion.
I just, very quickly, I'm sorry, like to comment on 6H, the Willow Creek stabilization, since that's in my neighborhood there. Benton Street is a very busy street and walkway, and the creek is very visible from the street and the walkway. So I'd been watching the progress of this stabilization, and I have to admit, the erosion had been getting really bad along there, and tree stumps and just wasting away. And so I was very impressed, and I'm pleased with the results.
And I just wanted to refer to item 6B, which is the formal appointment of our undergraduate student government liaisons, who really always bring tremendous value added and connect this community, the sort of town and gown, the town with the university community.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes, sorry.
That's all right. Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed at 6 to 0. Item number 8 is Community Comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak on an item that is not on our agenda. If you are present, we ask that you step to the podium. There is a sign-in sheet at the podium, and there are also stickers in the back of the room. For anyone online that wishes to comment, please raise your hand, and I'll acknowledge Seeing no one, we're going to move on, oh, sorry, there is a hand raised online. Welcome, FJ Piper. Please state your name and the city you're from.
Hi, my name's Felicia Peeper. I live in Iowa City.
Welcome.
I, thank you. I wanted to speak about our homelessness services in the city of Iowa City, or lack thereof. I'm increasingly concerned that I have still not heard about a winter shelter being open now that there's snow on the ground. I would also like to just speak a little bit more on one story of one person who is experiencing homelessness, who has been in the Shelterhouse system now for several months through multiple programs and not receiving the services that are described. There is a lack of accountability and transparency around our homelessness services, and I would like to know what the city is doing to fill the gaps for our neighbors and residents that need those services and they're not getting them. I'd like to speak more on one person's story, who started off by reaching out to Shelterhouse for eviction prevention services, moved through that process, really by herself without receiving those services. She was then transitioned into the rapid rehousing services and the permanent housing services. This has been going on for several weeks, and while I understand the barriers to receiving these services and the fact that they are, I guess, just like, not readily accessible, like, I am sympathetic to that, that there are rules to follow. But I think that the way that staff will, are not accountable to making sure that they're being in contact with the people that they are serving, I find this problematic for many reasons, but one reason being that our homeless neighbors are some of the most vulnerable neighbors, and that it seems like someone needs an advocate, multiple advocates, to even be able to receive the services that are offered through Shelterhouse. I would like to see the city make tangible steps to creating accountability processes and also transparency among those services. And once again, considering that our unhoused neighbors are some of the most vulnerable, how are we ensuring that those folks are getting connected and being treated with dignity? And I would like the city to take some ownership over this and make sure that the accountability is there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Seeing no one, we're going to move on to item number 9, which is Planning and Zoning Matters. 9A, rezon in 937 East Davenport Street. Ordinance rezoning property located at 937 East Davenport Street from medium-density single-family residential zone to medium-density single-family residential zone with a historic district overlay. And this is second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? If so, please step forward or raise your hand online. Council discussion.
I'm very much in favor of this, so pleased to see this, and I applaud the owners of this property for seeing the historical value of this home and wanting to preserve it. It's not a style we see these days, obviously, but it reminds me of the tiny homes that I envisioned for this city, so I'm very much in favor of this.
It's always good to see the owners, as you mentioned, just be on board with this, because sometimes that's not the situation, which we respect, anyone's opinion and choice, but this is a great opportunity, and we're, I'm excited to see this. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at 6 to 0. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed at 6 to 0. Item 10 is Sidewalk Cafes Expand Locations. Ordinance Amending Title 10, Entitled Public Ways and Property. Chapter 3, Entitled Commercial Use of Sidewalks to Ally Sidewalk Cafes Outside of the Downtown and Riverside Crossings. Could I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved. Burgess. Second. Weiner.
All right, we're going to welcome Rachel.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So currently, the sidewalk cafes are only allowed in the downtown and riverfront crossings zones. So this ordinance amendment would allow sidewalk cafes, without a liquor license, to operate outside of those districts. The cafes would be required to still abide by our sidewalk cafe ordinance and policy, as well as any other additional restrictions that staff or the city manager may see fit. So example, if you have a coffee shop operating in maybe a more residential neighborhood, maybe the hours of operation need to be reduced, that kind of thing. So as you'll recall, at your September 6 work session, you discussed several other recommended changes to our sidewalk cafe program. This is the only one that requires an ordinance change, so that first reading is before you now. Our sidewalk cafe program is governed by both ordinance and policy, so the other recommendations will be brought to you as a policy amendment at your next meeting on December 6.
Great. Any questions for Rachel? Thank you. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? If so, please come forth. There is no one online presently. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed at 6 to 0. Item number 11 is Land Acknowledgement Statement. Resolution Adopting a Land Acknowledgement Recognizing Indigenous Peoples and Their Traditional Territories on Which We Live. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Alter. Second. Burgess.
Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
The first few years of my life, I lived in a small town in Wyoming where indigenous people lived, worked, and were all around us, and they were even celebrated on several times throughout the year. So when my family moved to Iowa, which had cities, counties, and rivers with Native American names, I was surprised that there was hardly any mention of their heritage. In fact, they lived on reservations and were totally separate from most of us. So thank you, Counselor Weiner, for putting this before us to recognize the contributions made to our land by the indigenous people.
Thank you. It just, we, it had been recommended by at least two of our commissions that we produce a land acknowledgement statement, drew on basically material that was already present at the university, from the Native American Council, as well as the Law School. It just seemed to me, as you said, that it was long past time, that we honor those on whose land we live and thrive, that it's an essential part of our history. And I think that if we've learned anything over the past few years, it should be that we must learn from, accept and acknowledge our past, and allow it to inform our present and our future.
Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed at 6 to 0. Item number 12 is Filling Council Vacancy by Special Election. Resolution Setting a Special Election to Fill the Council Vacancy Created by Janice Weiner's Resignation. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Burgess. Second.
Alter.
All right, moved by Burgess, seconded by Alter. She was louder than you. And we're going to welcome our city attorney, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So hopefully, you've all had a chance to review the staff memo that came out on this topic. As you will recall, there are two methods by which you'll need to fill the council vacancy that will be created upon Counselor Weiner's resignation, the effective date for which is the end of this calendar year. The first is to appoint a replacement. The second is to call a special election to elect a replacement for Counselor Weiner. As a result, there are two competing resolutions on your agenda tonight. They are numbered items 12 and 13, respectively. One says that you'll choose to fill the vacancy via an appointment. The other says you choose to fill it by special election. So obviously, you will need to, or you will want to vote in favor of one and to reject the other. This is a zero-sum game. Only one of those can be the winner. As I've shared with Counselor Weiner and the rest of you, because Counselor Weiner remains a seated member of council through the end of this calendar year and has no legal conflict from participating in these discussions, she's free to take part in this discussion and vote, as she does with any and all other votes, until the effective date of her resignation at the end of this year. While, to be clear, while Counselor Weiner may take part in determining the method by which this council will decide how to fill that vacancy, because this council cannot appoint a replacement if council decides to appoint until the vacancy actually occurs, she will not be in a position to vote for the specific individual who will fill her shoes. So your task tonight is merely to determine how you wish to fill the vacancy by special election or by appointment. Obviously, I'm happy here to answer your questions as they relate to election costs or how we did it last time, or any other questions that you can think of, at least to the best of my ability, given how rarely this happens.
Eric, this is Megan. I have a question, and it may sound naive. Even though we have two separate agenda items, we can discuss them as, you know, sort of in play with one another in order to be able to make a decision, correct? We don't have to sort of like go through the first agenda item. I just, I'm, I want to make sure that we're not hamstringing ourselves. We'll be able to discuss both the pros and the cons of appointment and special election at the same time, correct? Even though we just end up with one decision.
Right. A fair question, and you're absolutely right. You can have a full-fledged discussion for the first agenda item, and they come in order, and I should be clear, no particular order. The order is number 12, it's by special election. So yes, you as a council should have a full discussion about whether you wish to have special election or appointment, and then, and then vote on this, and, well, and then vote on the second one, and as I said, hopefully, one of those will pass and the other does not.
Thank you.
All right, council discussion.
Personally, I'm not in favor of having a special election to fill the vacancy. I think that comes with, from, you did, thank you, Eric, you did share some of the statistics on the cost, thanks also to the Attorney's Office, but it's a hefty price tag and a lot of time and a lot of staff effort, and I just would say no to special election.
When we first started, oh, sorry, Megan, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, you go ahead, Laura.
I was just going to reflect on when we first knew this would be likely, I guess, when Janice announced her candidacy. At the time, I was very much like, Iowa City has no option but an election, right? Like, there's no way that Iowa City would stand for appointment of a city councillor. And then I went and looked at the, saw what Correville did, for one, but also knowing that the school district made an appointment, and went and looked up some statistics on special city council elections in Johnson County in the last several years. So the last, I believe the last Iowa City one was 2018. Is that right, Eric?
That's correct.
And so at that point, 9% of our registered voters participated in that election. And in 2019, the next year in North Liberty, they had a special city council election that was 7% of the registered voters. 2020 in Correville was better, 13.8% of the registered voters. Tiffin in 2020 had a special city council election, 4.48% of the registered voters. And just And just this year in North Liberty, they had a special city council election with 1.9% of the registered voters participating. So all of those statistics are just to say, not very many people participate. And we know that the timeline for a special election would be very short, and that a campaign, all of us up here have gone through a campaign of one type or another, takes a lot of effort, a lot of energy. It can take a lot of money, a lot of stress. And from an equity standpoint, I think a low-barrier application that is open to everyone, with us having the opportunity to speak with individuals who would be interested, is actually a better process for making it open to those who might be wanting and capable of serving than having a very, very low turnout, short timeframe special action. So I've moved, in my opinion, to favoring appointment.
I think this is one that I've really, really still kind of struggled with, because on principle, I think, you know, I'm totally in favor of having the people have a voice in this decision and having, you know, help with other of these short-term campaigns. I like how it can, opens things up a little bit more to somebody out there who might be able to field a campaign and can jump in. And, you know, this body here has benefited from the outcomes of special elections, and we've had some good results with that. I don't feel particularly a lot of, a lot of problem with the financial cost of a campaign, because I think just democracy is worth it. All of those things said, I definitely can see the point of, this is only going to be a year term versus a longer period of time. If we do run an election, special election, quite probably, this new person wouldn't be on until we are through or almost through the budget process, which was one of the things that I was originally concerned about. You know, we're talking about the, you know, the amount of money to run an election versus the amount of the budget that we're making decisions on, but somebody who comes in through a special election wouldn't really be part of that, would just, wouldn't be here in time for that process. So I'm still waffling back and forth a little bit on this, but those are the things that I've been sort of weighing out in my head as I do so.
Well, it may seem a little bit odd for me to speak on this, that, I guess, the thing that I've been thinking about is you refer to democracy. And I, and I ended up wondering, I mean, I remember when, when Councilor Burgess and I were first elected, the press came to us, and one of the things I said, it's really great, but I really wish we had more than 15 or 16% turnout or whatever it was. We need more, this local government affects you, and it would be really helpful if more people would turn out to vote. And so when I look at the possibility of a special election and really low turnout, it seems almost anti-democratic. And that's sort of my concern.
Well, certainly, I can see that in the time of year we're discussing, too.
Mayor Pro Tim Alter.
Yeah. I'm very much like Councilor Burgess, in that I started off thinking, and you and I have talked about it, Mayor, about like, well, of course, Iowa City just does special elections, but I, too, started to think about it, and there are several things that just sway me towards an appointment. For one, it's not even a year's appointment by the time the person comes on. It's roughly nine months. Corleville, Iowa City School District, and the League of Cities have, sorry, the former two conducted appointments, and then the League of Cities and the memo that we saw from Eric shows that that's sort of the majority way that many cities have conducted their business as well, for what that's worth. On you, you talked about the timing of it, as well as others. I think February is, that's a brutal time of year for people to get out. And we have just come off of a grueling midterm cycle, and I think that people are very tired. I think that that, too, is going to depress turnout. Ultimately, what sways me the most is that if, in fact, we go the route of an appointment, the public can speak and say that they want a special election. They just have to petition it. So it's not that we're cutting out the possibility of one. If people feel very strongly otherwise, the people can speak. And I think that that, that's the great thing about the way that this has been written. So I feel okay with putting forth an appointment, an RFP, if you will, you know, for people to apply. I very much would like to be able to talk with candidates as well, but that's kind of my thinking and where I'm leaning at this point.
So I appreciate all of the comments so far about, do we do special election? Do we appoint? Just like everyone, I've, you know, kind of gone through that process of, this is Iowa City, they will never allow a special election, I mean, they will never allow an appointment. And so I started there, and where we have to go to a special election, and as things began to unfold, many of the things that people processed here, I did determine that an appointment would be in the best interest of this, of the city. I've had many conversations with people in the community saying, hey, what are your thoughts? What, you know, what are you thinking here? And surprisingly, some of the, some of the political faces of those that are, you know, very prevalent when it comes down to elections, many of them kind of said, you know, I can be open to either, which was a little surprising. The timeline that many of you talked about is going to be short if we go to a special election. We're, you know, looking at not appointing someone, not having someone in that seat for, you know, some time, and then if we do an appointment, we'll have to talk about the, you know, when do we want to end the application process? I'm looking at how we typically do our, our commissions. So it, like, vacancy is new on our agenda for today. That application closes Tuesday, January 3. And so I would say that we would have an application process that would end no later than, no earlier than January 3 would be my proposal. And then if we were to go also with that appointment route, the question would be is, you know, what does that application look like for those that are interested? And also, how do we make sure that, as Councilor Burgess talked about, keeping the barriers low, more of a, how do we make sure that we ensure that we're asking, you know, some pertinent questions, but also making sure that it's equitable to everyone in the community that is interested in this opportunity? So I will be supporting the appointment route, and then I think at some point, we have to have a little more of the logistical conversations about how do we make that happen? Any other comments on this one?
Actually, I was going to say, with that, with that approach, do we have an idea for, like, how long it would take to put out an actual, like, would that be something we'd prepare and then vote on the announcement, the job posting, if you will, at our, at our next meeting? And then can we even do that while there's still a vacancy? Like, when can we actually start that process?
Oh, yeah, we can start the process now. And so if you want to spend some time and, or if you want to give some guidance to staff, and we can present a draft perhaps for your December 6 meeting, that'd be fine. Based on your remaining meeting schedule for this year, I think it would probably be, if council wants to provide input or to approve the application form or any other part of the application process, we would probably need to have that from you by December 6, or to have you vote on it on December 6.
I appreciate the application forms that you shared with us, that Corvale utilized, the school district, and of course, there are a lot of things that would need to be tweaked a bit, but otherwise, the format was, you know, what I think we could utilize and would be helpful.
And would we also have to set up now or decide when we finally make this decision on the timing for, like, are we going to set up a process that involves like a two-stage application, then interviews, and then timeframe for that? I mean, I'm just wondering about some of the logistics that the mayor was talking about, just if we've, what that might look like. I know some, I think some of this was in the memo, but I don't know if all of it was.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming that, I mean, I'm hearing the consensus is to appoint, and if that's the case, and you'll want to decide on an application process, that's the form, that's the process itself, that is, would you folks want interviews? Would you just be doing it based on, you know, what you see in the application and/or, you know, letters of reference, you know, whatever you're interested in as a council? And then it would, again, be best if we nail that all down by December 6. So if, it's up to you. If you want to have some discussion about kind of your desires in that regard tonight, that would give staff some direction, and again, we can present something to you that you can react to, and then we can, you know, make changes on the fly at the meeting on the 6, if that's your, if you want to make any. But then we'd have the process nailed down, and then the city clerk, and I can, you know, make sure we get the notices published and so forth, consistent with the state law and all the other requirements that are there in, at state code.
I think the examples that you gave us were really good at other cities and their application. And then we already have an application process that we use for our commissions. And so I would, you know, propose that we either look at that right now in real time, look at our current commission application, and maybe decipher what we don't think is necessary for a council appointment. We know that the gender requirement is a state requirement for people to, you know, answer that. And so I think we can remove things that are not, you know, that aren't required.
To be clear, Mayor, the, the gender balance and so forth is for board and commissioners. Maybe that's what you're seeing already. That would not be required, yeah.
No, that would not be required. But it is required for our commission applications. And so, and then if, if that is the case, if, if we want to, you know, go that route, at starting, you know, there, when I look at the city of Corvilles, the information that they ask is what we ask, for the most part, within our commissioners. Our application is just very long, because we have some, we spell out a few things, an explanation of, like, tell us if you're on a city commission before, you know, that type of stuff. So, and maybe we don't want to know that information unless they naturally say that they've been on a, you know, on a, on a, like, for instance, Corvale, you know, talks about experience and or activities which you feel qualify you for the city council. So maybe there are some tweaks that we can make somewhat on the fly, and we can use what we already have as a standard. And then the question would be, is if we do make this determination, how quick can the city clerk office post whatever edits, you know?
Are you wanting this to be online?
I think it should be online. I don't know how else we can make that possible to...
Is it possible, sorry, is it possible actually to have paper copies, if people, if they were interested, that could come, get one at City Hall as well?
We certainly could. I mean, that's how we do it with boards and commission. There's, you know, right.
Both.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if they wanted it online also. I just don't know as far as IT. I'm assuming if it's easy tweaks from the application we already have, that it wouldn't take them a lot of time to do.
Yeah, I like what you, where you were going with that, Mayor, and I just pulled up the, our current application. I think the experience and/or activities which you feel qualify you for this position is an excellent prompt. The present knowledge of the council, I think, is also a good, good question. I defer to Eric, but I think including something relating to conflicts of interest might be helpful, necessary.
Well, you, yeah, I mean, again, since this is a purely political decision for council to make insofar as who this person would be, and if they have conflicts that are going to create problems, then that's a fair question, and it'd be good for you to know. Sure.
And then I guess my biggest question is if we're not, I really like for commission appointments when we have the demographic information, but that is like a bit of a double-edged sword as well. So I don't know how people feel about requiring, well, not requiring it, but having it like we do on the commission application where it's optional, but, you know, people can answer those questions.
Such as age and race and those kinds of things.
Yeah.
If we can expand it to non-binary and, you know, and just be a little more inclusive, I would be okay with that. So then the question would be, anything else? Okay. So I guess the, the question would be is, if this council is comfortable, based on the discussion today, if staff, and I know that Mayor Pro Tim Alter and I, we meet with the city manager's office tomorrow, and we can also include our attorney, Eric, if council is comfortable with us just kind of finalizing that discussion real quick tomorrow, and so that staff could go forth and create the final document. And if you all are comfortable, we can just give it a thumbs up and send it out electronically and have copies, paper copies in the city clerk's office.
I would be comfortable with that.
All right, so seeing majority have hit nod.
I think we still have to vote on the...
Oh, we do.
Well, we have to vote on the item, but this is a helpful discussion.
No, 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 to make a good discussion. I think we, one thing, too, I would add with that, and just as, so we've mentioned of using as a safeguard, the ability of people to, the public to gather signatures, just so that we make sure this process, that we are like, making sure people know the time windows for that, their availability to do such a thing. Because it is a little bit, from the memo, it's a little bit confusing. There's like two stages, I think, to that. And, and just, just to make sure that in the interest of, if we're going to do an appointment, that we are making sure our community, if they think this is an unwise decision, they know what they need to do to be our safeguard.
Would we publish that in the newspaper or just in, on our webpage?
Right. So if the council decides to make an appointment and so forth, then we have to publish notice, and that's one of the state law requirements. And part of that, an element of that, is to point out, you know, the community's right to file that petition and so forth, exactly what you're addressing. Yeah.
So I think the sooner we decide these details, the sooner that publication would occur.
Well, yes and no. There's a window in which we need to publish, and that's between four and 20 days before the actual appointment. And I targeted January, the January 10 meeting for council. I figured maybe at your budget meeting was maybe not the time when you wanted to do this. Correct me if that was not right. But the next meeting is the January 10 meeting, and so we would need to track back between, you know, the publication would have to be, you know, no fewer than four days, no more than 20 days before January 10.
Gotcha. What do people think about interviewing versus evaluating them like we do commission applications, or putting the onus on us to contact people who we want to speak with? How do we want to do that?
Do we want to do, depending on the number of applications, do it like stages, like, you know, try and, by looking at applications, narrow it down to a smaller number, and then, I think then, at that point, group interviews would probably be more efficient than somebody trying to answer seven different phone calls, or, you know what I mean? Just in terms of, or maybe that's not, not the way, but that's just my first thought.
Eric, with that, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if we were to do it as a group interview, those would have to be open meetings, correct?
Yes.
Right, right.
And I think that's how Corvale did it, not that that means that's how you have to do it, but that would be my recommendation, is that you folks do it as a group, as a whole council, yeah.
I did see, and no disrespect to Corvale, I did see that process, and I think there was great value there. But as I look at what we do now for our commission, for, you know, commission selections, there are some commissions where, you know, we're all in and we're, you know, people are contacting us, having those one-on-one discussions, or we're contacting individuals. I think, you know, we can, you know, bring people into a meeting and have them each, you know, give their comments, but personally, I, I think I would find it more... you know, give their comments, but personally, I, I think I would find it more advantageous for me to talk one-on-one with individuals and, and then we come back and we make our selections that way. But that's just me. And I, I do understand the, you know, it won't be public, right? That I'm having these one-on-one conversations, but...
We don't care about the public here.
So I wonder if that's even something we have to nail down the actual...
We don't give a crap about public opinion here.
We've nailed down that level of detail at this point, so...
I think it's a good point though, Mayor, because like during the normal process, special, or a regular election process, we hear from the candidates and we hear what their priorities are. And that's one thing that wouldn't be on that commission application, is what do you see as your priorities? And that might be something we might want to add on there so that we know if, if affordable housing is their priority, or, or transit, or what it might be. So we kind of know where they're coming from.
We got to get the hippies.
I think we can have both ands. So we could potentially have, as you were talking, I heard more like that when we were all camp, you know, going for our candidacy, we sat in a forum, you know, and we all had three minutes of whatever. What I, what I would suggest is that maybe we have people come up for three to five minutes that apply, and they just share whatever they want.
What about the question of winnowing, like you were saying, Sean? You know, if we get 100 applications, are we committed to three minutes for each person? Because obviously any selection to get to the top 10 or some, who knows, would have to be public as well. Megan?
I think that, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of winnowing, you know, to, to get to kind of, you know, a manageable number. That honestly is respectful of everyone's time, including the candidates, right, or the applicants. If someone does it on a whim and, but really is sort of like, wow, I didn't expect I was going to have to talk about this, you know? On the one hand, I don't want to make assumptions for anybody if they've gone very serious about it. But ultimately, if we have a lot of people applying, I think there does, it, it just makes sense to me to, to, to get it down to a manageable number. I think in some regards, that's mirroring the way a primary works. It's mirroring certainly how it works for job interviews. So I don't think that we're really doing anything unusual by approaching it in that way.
Would that be just two different consecutive meetings then? Like a public, one meeting to say, these are our top five? And then another one that we would have, but missed part of what you said, but three to five minutes where they would...
Like a forum, where they tell what their priorities are, right, yeah.
You know, and if by some reason we get five or less, or whatever that number is, less applications, then we don't need a first round meeting. We could always cancel a meeting, maybe, if, you know, I don't know how that would...
Well, sure. That's my question. I mean, I'm assuming that the winnowing would be done by the whole council as opposed to, well, anyone else.
I think so, yeah.
And then that could be done any number of ways. I mean, if you, I mean, it's kind of a matter of time, your time management. I mean, obviously you could do that at the meeting on the 7th, if you all just came in with, these are my five candidates. We're just going to, you know, see from each of you, you know, who your five are and add them up, and whoever, you know, the five candidates are with the most votes is the ones, or are the ones that'll be interviewed by the council on the 10th. Or you could have a special meeting and have a, you know, broader discussion or a lengthier discussion about it. Or you can have a lengthier discussion on the 7th if you'd want, but I'm guessing that you, neither you nor staff probably want to do that, and for that will already be a long meeting. But yeah, scheduling a special meeting, whatever you want to do. Or it doesn't have to be the 10th. Like I said, that's, I picked that rather arbitrarily, figuring it would be the earliest one and that you'd want that person to be as involved in the budget process as they can be. But, you know, we could schedule it out if, if that's the process you folks chose.
Could we reverse engineer that just slightly and do the, going through the narrowing down our applications if necessary on the 10th? And then having a special meeting like two days later to make a final decision? Like have them in and speak? I mean, I'm just trying to think of options here, maybe that spitballing a little bit.
I think, so the 7th is our Saturday budget work session, right?
I believe, I think it's a Saturday, but, but yes.
Kelly's saying yes.
Okay.
So if...
I trust Kelly.
I mean, I, I think what Eric was saying of if we have whatever it is, our top ones and just, you know, I, I think there's a high likelihood there will be a relative amount of consensus so that we'll be able to say, you know, these are the people who we want to say we would like to hear more from you. I really like the idea of setting that date, whether it's January 10th or another day. I like the 10th, that's my birthday. But I like the idea of setting that, like definitively as soon as possible, so that anyone who's thinking about it would know that we're talking about having a process where they may, you know, want to come in and speak to us. So yeah, I, I'd be in favor of kind of what Eric proposed, that we have, you know, we just get them numbered or something like that, if we can make that work timing-wise. And then we just, like we did with strategic planning, we don't just...
Carve 10 minutes out of the 7th and, or 15 minutes or whatever out of the 7th to do that part of the, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So if we had the applications due by the 3rd, we can even move it to the 5th if, that week, well, no, it would have to be, yes. It would have to be by the 4th of Wednesday.
Let me try to think this through. Well, are you thinking about the, the publish notice issue or the, how much time you folks have to consider and review the applications?
Right.
Both of those? Two days does not leave a lot of...
No, and that is true. So, I mean, certainly we can go, I mean, when I went for special election, it was literally about a month, so...
Well, I mean, just thinking back, if, if you would like to make the ultimate selection on the 10th and are willing to do the winnowing on the 7th, then that's fine.
Have we got to figure out all these balls sitting around this room?
We could, you know, if we publish closer to 20 days before, that would be, you know, December 20, 21st, something like that. So I, I think you would be fine. I mean, that would allow, you know, between, let's say, the 21st or 22nd, and it's not, we don't have a, you know, that's not as flexible as we would like it to be. It happens to be whenever the press citizen does their legal notices. But there would be at least a week in there, maybe a little more time if you made it due on January 3rd. If you wanted to do it in January 5th, we could. That would not leave a lot of time to, for us to get you all the applications and for you to consider them before the 7th. But that's, that's kind of your decision as to how much time you think you'll need.
Two days is tight.
That's tight.
That's tight.
The 3rd.
I think the 3rd is good.
Do the 3rd?
If, Kelly, is that feasible for you and your staff?
Sure.
Thank you.
That was a good funny joke.
So then, okay, all right. And then 7th, we'll have, we'll come with our top numbers, although, I mean, there's a, there's a chance that there, you know, may not be more than seven people.
Right, right.
So if, and, so I don't know if we say, you know, if there's seven or more, you know, we will select. If not, I think we can certainly invite seven people.
Yeah. Whatever that counts, seven's a reasonable...
Sure. Sounds good.
And then allow everyone that opportunity at that point, all right? And then...
Allow everybody what?
And then we'll have that meeting on the 10th.
Allow everybody the opportunity to tell their story?
And the publication, so just in thinking of this timeframe, is, when can the application be live? I understand the publication, but like, when, when can we actually start accepting applications?
Oh, I, I think your question is can we begin accepting the applications before the actual vacancies?
Correct.
Yes, I believe we can.
Okay. Or before the publication?
Before, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah. Before the publication and before the end of the calendar year, both, both, okay.
Right, yeah, both, sorry.
Okay.
It's, it's, the publication is just ensuring that folks who are getting their word of this through the publication, and let's concede that that's probably not very many of them, have that opportunities to still put in their application prior to the deadline, which we're seeing is the 3rd.
January 3rd?
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
I have an important story, and you guys are cutting me off.
Yeah, all right. Anything else?
So just to recap, maybe we could recap what we're doing.
Would you like me to try to spell out the chronology as I understand it?
Yes.
That'd be great.
So we'll publish notice around December 21st, again, depending on when, I don't know what day of the week that is, you know? Yeah, well, we'll check with the press citizen and it'll be, it'll be no earlier than the 21st. It'll be the first available date after, on the 21st or after.
Okay.
And then applications will be due by January 3rd. If there are more than seven applicants, we will do the, you will do the winnowing at your meeting on the 7th. And then on the 10th, you will make the final decision.
And prior to that, I think we've given, have we given enough input as far as what should be on the application so that you and Mayor Protem, Mayor can get that finalized and get it published as soon as possible? Not published in the newspaper, but put online and had copies available as soon as possible?
Well, here's my question. Would you like, you know, your next meeting is on December 6th, and, you know, maybe you feel like we've had enough discussion now and, and you've laid it out and we can certainly just go forward with it? Or you can approve kind of all of this in a, in an item on the 6th, including the application itself? It's entirely up to you. If you want to get it out sooner, then, you know, there should just be a consensus that, you know, as you, as the mayor indicated, that the mayor, the Mayor Protem, city manager, city clerk and city attorney will get together, finalize based on the input that you provided tonight, and we'll put it out there so that folks can start applying.
To answer your question, I think, I feel confident, confident that we'll be able to review and, and get an application that we know that this council would approve.
I'm comfortable with that, yeah. I just wanted to clarify that was...
And then I think we get it out as soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
One other thing I would ask for council to consider is every Thursday, and I don't know how big of a deal this might be, but we upload any applicants that come in, in our info packet. One, it'd give us opportunity to speak to anyone and give the public opportunity to know who is actually applying. Typically, we wait for commissioners to all be published, you know, at one time when there's an opening. So for instance, if applications are due January 3rd, we wouldn't post until January 5th. So I think just to have it a little more transparent to the public, every Thursday in our info packet as applications come through, we would just upload them in the info packet.
Once they start coming in?
As they start coming in. And then, because we also want, you know, opportunities for, I'm sure people will reach out if they're interested in being on this council, they'll reach out to each of us. But I think it'd just...
I do have one question. Does that in any way, coming from like test-taking background, so to speak, but does that disadvantage anyone who is brave and submits right away? Then others have an opportunity to be able to see what they've written and can, they're working off of them, you know, they have, they have a model in front of them that they can work from.
Hmm.
I don't mean that, you know, negatively, it's just that, you know, if somebody's doing this and it's a blank slate, then others can see it and go, oh, right, okay, I can do da-da-da-da-da, you know? It just, it can jog a memory or what have you. I'm just wondering if that would unfairly disadvantage someone who was brave.
Is the council going to get more repression?
If, if, and I hear what you're saying, and I, I would agree. Then I would suggest that we move it up just one week to December 27th, that the applications are due. And then we'll have, it'll be posted Thursday, the 29th. And that'll give us, you know, 10 days, something like that.
So, I mean, I don't even think, I mean...
Nine days.
That's fine. I was just going to say too, Megan, make, council member Alter makes a good point. But, you know, if we were doing this as campaigns, it's the same dynamic. You know, if somebody were to launch a campaign, somebody else wants to launch a week later, they could see what the first, I mean, that's, I, I think that we're not in a, in quite a, the same kind of testing situation. You know, it's not that different. So I'd be comfortable with either just like a week or two earlier starting to collect or, or whatever, but I think that's probably just the way, that's the way this, this cookie crumbles, I think, so...
That makes a good, you make a really good point. I think it's more like, I just want to, if anything, for us to be aware of it as we're thinking about it.
Mm-hmm.
And going through and vetting things. So, yeah, no, I didn't mean it as like, okay, so we got to take that off the table, just raising it for, for conversation. So, but I, I think you're right, Sean, it definitely makes sense. Like, you know, this is a campaign situation, just albeit in a different mode.
So do we want to just push the deadline a week earlier and have more time to review them all? Or are we talking about doing sort of the rolling posting? Or maybe both?
Here's, here's my one concern about that. So as I mentioned, we're going to try to publish as close as we can to the 21st. I'm a little uncertain whether that'll be the 21st, 22nd, or 23rd, something like that. And so you would want to leave some time, and so I'm concerned if, if you're talking about having the due date be the 27th with, with of course, the, you know, some holidays in between there, that might not leave a lot of time for applicants. But that's a political decision, not a legal one.
We could publish on the 7th.
We could? No, we could not. Not if you wanted to appoint on the 10th, because it needs to be at least four days.
Oh, sorry, okay. See, this is why you're here, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
So January 3rd.
January 3rd.
January 3rd.
We're back to January 3rd. So the question is rolling posting, right? Or rolling dissemination of applicants versus all at once? Right?
And I'm fine taking my, my comment off the table. Rolling is fine.
No, it was a great point.
If that lends itself to the process that we've been talking about, that's fine by me.
No, I think it was important to bring up so that we just acknowledged it. And, and I think what Counselor Harmson said is, it is like campaigning in a way, you know? People roll out whenever. And I think having as much transparency with the public as possible on these applicants is probably beneficial.
Why, you guys hide all the stuff you're doing?
So for Kelly's sake, is it cumulative? Like each week, it's everyone who's applied that gets stuck in the packet? Or just new ones? Or do you care?
I think we keep it rolling where it's cumulative.
Okay.
It's important that UNESCO knows who the applicants are.
That seems a little easier for us to handle, yeah.
Political repression.
And maybe at the top...
From the top on down, yeah?
Yeah. I was going to say just their submission date, you know?
Right.
Where you have like, these are the applicants and the date they submit it.
Cool.
Any other?
So what I'm hearing is that, I think we've got a timeline laid out. We're going to defer to the mayor and Mayor Protem and staff for the application process. So at this point, I don't see any reason to bring it up again on the 6th unless there's anything that you folks think it remains unresolved. I, I think staff, and I'm going to look at staff here, I think we've got the information that we need.
You still need to vote?
We still need to vote, and again, I'll remind council that the first item is to fill by special election, and the second item is for appointment.
All right. So roll call for the special election.
Alter.
For special election? No.
Special election, yes. I'm sorry, I acknowledge your vote is no. Burgess.
No.
Harmson.
No.
Taylor.
No.
Teague.
No.
Weiner.
No.
Motion fails zero to six. Item number 13 is fill-in council vacancy appointment. This is a resolution given notice of intent to make an appointment to fill the council vacancy created by Janice Weiner's resignation. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Taylor.
All right. Any additional staff comments?
Not for me, thank you.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic?
Yeah.
Please state your name and city, and there's a sign-in.
Joe Burdley, Marinco, Iowa. Joe Burdley, Marinco, Iowa.
Welcome.
Hi, how you doing? I got three minutes. I got two and a half minutes left.
Hearing no further comments.
I got, I got two and a half minutes left, Bruce.
You can speak on this item.
Be quiet when I'm up on the stand then, please. Respect me for once. Thank you.
So this is fill in a council vacancy appointment, and you're not talking about that item? And we're gonna end your time now. Council discussion?
Mayor, just looking at what's in the packet of the notice, okay, there's the resolution. All right. Sorry, I was trying to determine if we are actually approving the language of the notice, or do you...
I believe the language I put in the resolution says something substantially similar or something. We'll certainly make sure everything is compliant, given our discussion this evening.
Perfect.
All right. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed to six to zero. Item number 14 is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 14A is board of adjustment. Board of adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2027. We, council discussion at this point. So the board of adjustment has one vacancy with no gender balance required.
First, I was a little confused by this one, because one of the applicants, Mr. Baker, talked about that he wouldn't mind just filling it to bridge, and so I actually called him today to see what he meant by that and whether he would be interested in doing a full term then, and, and he said, oh, yes, he would definitely be interested in doing a full term, that at the time of the application, I think that was when we were filling...
One second. We're, we're in council meeting, and please, please, we are having a discussion.
You are the one that's being rude.
I'm being rude?
Yes.
Please.
How am I being rude?
All right, we're gonna continue with our council meeting at this point.
Speaking over people and interrupting people, yes.
Well, I didn't get my three minutes now, did I?
You didn't speak.
All right.
That's all right, okay.
Counsel Patel, you can continue.
Okay, I will continue with what I was saying. I spoke to Mr. Baker. He's well-known in the community and has, has served a lot of positions, but apparently at the time when he filled this out in June, I believe it was, there was an unexpected vacancy, and he was willing to serve then for temporary, but we didn't utilize him. But I would recommend putting him in this term now, because he said he would do a full term, be willing to.
I'm comfortable with that, Larry Baker.
So Larry Baker is a, is on the table for now. Any other consideration?
I would go with Baker as well, although I could only hear part of it, because there was a lot of yelling.
All right. And I would support Baker, so we have majority of support there, so we'll go ahead and vote each one of these as we go. And so could I get a motion to appoint Larry Baker?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Weiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes seven, six to zero. All right, on to 14B, Climate Action Commission. Climate Action Commission, there are three vacancies to fill, three-year terms, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2025, and this is council discussion. There is a gender balance requirement, and it's three females that we have to appoint.
I just want to open it up and say that this was an extraordinary batch of applicants. Very difficult, and we would be well-served by all of them, honestly, so thank you to everybody who applied. A couple of names that rose to my attention were Elizabeth Fitzsimmons and Rebecca Nielsen. And there's a few others, but I'll just put those two out as, as candidates that I think could really add unique perspectives while fitting into a more cohesive whole for the Climate Action Committee.
Is Climate Action one of the, one of the commissions that's open to people outside of Iowa City?
Yeah, yeah.
I liked Michelle Silman as well.
I also liked Michelle Silman. Although I had, had a question about her, Eric. She mentioned working for that North American Energy Company, NG. Would there be any conflict of interest with that? I mean, we have a Mid-American Energy person, so would, would there be any problem with that?
Right, I don't think so. Certainly if any issue would come up that would address her employer, she would need to recuse.
She'd have to recuse herself, okay.
But, you know, much like we have a lot of people who work for the university, you know, I mean, that would be fine, we could work around that.
I liked her as well, and had the same question, so it's nice to have that answered in the positive, or negative.
And Counselor Weiner, I believe you're the one that asked the question about Iowa City requirement. It's recommended, but as long as you're in Johnson County, and I believe, which one is it, who is it that's...
Rebecca Nielsen, who works in emergency preparedness, lives in Tiffin.
Oh, okay, and, but I, I was looking, I think it was Jamie Gade lives in North Liberty, so there was a North Liberty person and a Tiffin person, and either one of those, I think, would be good. They might provide an additional perspective to the commission, so either one of those would be good.
So which names did you just give? I know you said Michelle Silman you agreed with.
There was...
Fitzsimmons, I think, was one of the names that was mentioned.
Nielsen and Jamie Gade, I think you said.
And Jamie Gade. Jamie Gade was the North Liberty person, and Nielsen was the Tiffin.
Yeah, and then there's Michelle Silman. Basically, four out of five of the women seem, seem quite qualified, at least.
But now we have to pick three, right?
Yes.
For what it's worth, just to, and again, we have an embarrassment of riches here. The reason why I was interested in Elizabeth Fitzsimmons is because she's younger, honestly, and, you know, has, is, is graduating out of UI, and it just seemed to me that there was kind of like younger energy, as well as a wealth of knowledge, and she has a lot with prairie conservation, so again, that's a kind of a different angle than some of the other candidates. But again, each, each brings strengths, but I was kind of taken by the fact that she was younger, and it seems that, you know, the level of interest from generations that are just coming up now might be able to bring a certain something.
Kind of on a similar note, one of the things that jumped out at me with Jamie Gade's application was the, her background in health outcomes, and I think that's, to me, that just, I mean, they're, they all had good stuff in them, so it's, but that, but that one did sort of, sort of jump up, you know, a little bit, and I thought that might be an interesting part of the mix, because I think that's, you know, obviously, when we're talking about climate action and health outcomes and resilience, it all sort of plays together.
Okay, oh, go right ahead.
Yeah, I would just, what, what would people think about Fitzsimmons, Gade, and Nielsen?
Yeah, that's kind of where I hear the majority leaning towards, and I can support those three.
My number one was Michelle Silman, but I have no objection to the three you just named.
Oh, Silman is one of them.
Oh.
No.
No, no, Silman, you didn't list.
The first four are so good, I don't know which, which...
I'm sorry, which one did you say?
But I was, I said what I was hearing was Fitzsimmons, Gade, and, Gade and Nielsen, but I, that may not be the case.
We, we talked about Silman.
I had Silman, Fitzsimmons, Gade as my top three.
I want to make sure that I heard Counselor Weiner correctly. Silman?
No, I had not initially said Silman, but, but...
What, what name did you say, then?
I said Fitzsimmons, I was hearing from people.
Oh, okay.
Gade, and then it seemed, it sounds as if sort of the difference is between Nielsen and Silman, which, which of those for the number three, for the numbers three, because it sounded like most people were interested in Fitzsimmons and Gade.
Yeah.
For, for what it's worth, as the mayor said earlier in the meeting, I have a loud voice, so I think I'm the only one who's actually been bringing up Fitzsimmons. I don't know if there's been head nods or, or not, but given that Silman has come up for several, you know, I don't have a problem with that. Again, this has been an embarrassment of riches, and it's wonderful, and there will be other opportunities, so I don't have a problem with...
Oh, I was gonna bring up Fitzsimmons, you just beat me to it.
Okay.
But I, I hear somebody say that between kind of Nielsen and Silman.
Well, no, I'm sort of hearing more Fitzsimmons, Gade, and Silman. Is that correct?
I mean, I'm okay with either one of these. Laura, you said that was your number one pick, what was?
I had, I had Silman, Fitzsimmons, Gade, if I had, if I had to rank them, which I tried to make myself do.
I would agree with those three.
All right, so I do hear a shift to Fitzsimmons, Gade, and Silman.
Yep.
All right. Majority for those, all right. So could I get a motion to appoint Elizabeth Fitzsimmons, Jamie Gade, and Michelle Silman?
So moved.
Second, Taylor.
All right. Moved by Burgess, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Item number 14C is Human Rights Commission. Human Rights Commission, there are three vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2024, and council discussion.
I just had a quick question for Kelly. How does 14C affect 14D with the gender balance?
Well, when we did the cover sheet for, for both, they're identical, so it's one female, two male, and one none, so that that balances out if you appoint all four people. So the three full terms and then the one unexpired. I think you could probably look at it all together and just decide who you're gonna do that.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Which one, which one of them would be the unexpired one? Okay, I see, okay.
So maybe I'll read the next one as well, because I think that might be helpful for us to discuss all at once. So 14D is Human Rights Commission. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31st, 2024. So we'll talk about the three vacancies to fill a three-year term, and then the one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, and we'll have to determine who takes what. Now, the one that is unexpired, do we know what that gender?
It's a woman who stepped in.
Right, yes, it is, yeah.
I think Kelly said it doesn't matter, right?
It doesn't matter who we pick, as long as...
As long as, yeah.
The requirement...
As long as the group is...
We're fine.
Everything male and male.
All right, great.
I'll echo what, what's been said. I don't remember if it was Counselor Weiner or Harmson who commented on the number of qualified individuals. I just, I, it never ceases to amaze me here recently, the number of passionate, qualified individuals that, that have been applying for, for these boards and commissions, and their willingness to serve their, their community in this manner. It's quite obvious that they, they aren't applying just on a whim. They, they really, really want to do this, so I just wanted to make that comment. And I guess on that note, I think there was, as far as the male, one of the males, Mark Priest has been, just finished his first term, I believe, and I think, you know, this, this particular commission, I think, has a big learning curve when it comes to some of the grants and things that they, that they make. I know some, some of my fellow commissioners or council members like to spread the wealth as far as membership on these, but, but I think it would be invaluable to, to keep him on for another term.
I did have two that I wanted to throw out there. Suyon Cannon is one, and the other is Badri Kuku. And if you read on both of them, they have huge community ties that I think really speaks to representing various people that the Human Rights Commission deals with, and I would just throw their names out there for consideration.
I don't know if others were contacted, but TJ Dadoo Norris contacted me, and I was very, very impressed with the conversation that we had, so I'd recommend them.
Yes, I can support TJ.
I would throw Kiran Patel's name out in there, into the mix.
Kiran Patel.
Thank you, Counselor Harmson. I had her name checked, too. I know her through, through other things, and I know her to be a very responsible person, very dedicated, and if she sets her mind to something, or if she has an assignment, she, she's very dedicated to whatever she, she does, and I know she probably wasn't on other people's radar, so I appreciate you bringing her name up, Sean.
The two, two others that really stood out to me are, and I may not be pronouncing it right, it was Wifag Mohammed and Jonavi Pandya.
And then Jonavi?
Yeah.
All right.
Jonavi.
Jonavi, I think it may be Jonavi.
Any other names people want to throw out?
Ahmed Ismail.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. So we have a lot of names out here today. All right. I think, you know, maybe we go through, I'll read the names really quickly while people try to determine where their support wants to be, off all of the names that's been submitted, although I would agree, there are a lot of great people here. So I'll just read the names, and then we'll go back through, and then I'll just ask for people to, where your support is. So we have one female, Suyon Cannon, one female, TJ, I don't know how to...
Dadoo Norris?
Dadoo Norris. One male, Ahmed Ismail, a male, Badri Kuku, female, Wifag Mohammed, female, Jonavi, Padia, female, Kiran Patel, and the last one I have is a male, Mark Priest. So we have a requirement for two males, so maybe I'll start with the males first. So we have, I count three males, Isamad Ismail, and Badri Kuku, and then Mark Priest. So we'll start with the Ahmed Ismail. So how many people support?
I support him.
I support him as well.
And I can support him, so we have that as majority. And then we'll go down to Badri Kuku, and I support him.
I'll support him.
I support him.
I do as well.
I support him. He actually attempted to reach out to me just as council was beginning, so I was not able to talk to him, but in and of itself, I know that the fact that, you know, there are people who are reaching out, you know, shows initiative, so, and I was, I liked what he had written in his application.
So we won't go to Mark under the male, but we do have one non, and so we'll throw Mark in that category, okay? So we'll start with the females. Now, there are two, five females. Five females that we have listed. So I'll just go through their names, first names. Suyan, TJ. Wifang. Janavi. And Kiran. So we'll go to Suyan. And I support Suyan.
Now that we've narrowed it down, would it make sense to chat about, since we have a larger number to help us?
I guess we have an opportunity to either choose, I mean, we can throw Mark Priest in this unless.
I'd like your idea of keeping him, because we have two male, one has to be female, one can be.
Either.
None.
I think maybe, maybe do this one first, and then, and then we could do, well, I don't, I don't care, it doesn't matter to me.
We need ranked choice voting.
There we go.
Because like, I support Suyan, but my number one was TJ, so I sort of have one and two with TJ and Suyan.
So in a way, since Mark Priest is the only one left, naturally, if he's selected, he's gonna be out of the non.
Yes. He would, he would absorb that spot.
And I think that that works really quite nicely, because he can help, as, as Pauline said, and actually very convincingly, like, this can help sort of with continuity and transition, you know, and help, help people kind of get on board.
I, I'm a huge Mark Priest fan, and I think that we have so many, and at the same time, my view is that we have so many really well-qualified people who always come forward with human rights, that, that I'm gonna have, I'm, as much as I, I have loved Mark Priest, I'm probably, I'm not gonna support him, because I think we need to give some of these other folks a chance.
Yeah, and I love Mark Priest as well. I think he has done an outstanding job with the Human Rights Commission. Very dedicated, always in attendance, on time, on top of it. But we have been faced with a lot of applicants, great applicants. This is a highly-desired commission. And I think, we've made some hard decisions before. I'll just bring up, V was one of the ones that, you know, we, we absolutely would have loved to obtain them on a commission, but it was a hard decision that this council made, and, you know, look at them now. So, always a hard thing, but absolutely love Mark Priest, but I won't support with all of these great applicants.
I, I can understand what all of you are saying, but I would caution you to realize that it's a total of four people, and it would be a total of four brand-new people on this, this very, I think, stressful, wonderful commission. But four new people on there, that's a big learning curve.
How many total are on the commission? Nine, okay. Thank you for.
So I still stand for Mark Priest.
Okay. All right, so.
For the nun position.
Sure, sure, all right. So we'll go through, people say where they are, and then we'll add up at the end. So we'll go with Suyan Cannon. So I support Suyan, and I guess we get two votes, how about that? Can we get two votes?
Sure.
Then yes, I'll go with her as well.
Okay.
Yes.
So I hear three.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so I hear.
I'll support her.
I hear six. All right, so we're down to one other vote, and it can be a nun, since we already did the female. So TJ, and I support TJ.
I support TJ. They're really amazing, you guys, so you know.
Leave you.
Okay. We will move to Wifang.
Really long narrative, just hard to imagine, I mean, it's hard to imagine what, everything that she's been through, and to get where she is, it just seems to me like she would, when I looked at her, and, and the one who came immediately after her in alphabetical order that they both have, a tremendous amount to offer, I just, I don't even, at this point, know how to choose between them.
We all have one more vote. Well, wait a minute, I used up my, I guess if, if it didn't pass, we have one more.
This is why we need ranked choice, we need to go back through.
Well, all right, we'll see where we end up.
Yeah.
So, Janavi.
I think she would be my other choice. It's like, if I supported Suyan, I think I would support Janavi, sort of this combination at only about twenty-five, serves to refugees and immigrants, volunteers with the Native American population, anti-racism advisor, psychologist, Hindu, sort of a, a, a mix of stuff that I don't think that I've ever seen together in one person, which is what impressed me so much.
So I guess, so I guess the question is, since TJ didn't move forward, can we now vote again, or, or is it possible that no one would get four?
I think you can just move, move it forward.
So we can vote?
I don't know why not, otherwise it's gonna be down to one and, one and one, or something like that, so.
Well, I can, I can support. Janavi.
Sure.
Yes.
Me, too.
So I hear a majority. Okay, all right. So, for, now, let's determine who will get the shorter term. Do we flip a coin? How about?
I mean, council's practice has, has often been, if someone serves a partial term, then we'll consider the, so it's almost an advantage to have a partial term, because usually, in the past at least, we've, if someone wanted to continue to serve.
I mean, if we're looking for some rationale, that we, Johnny is a PhD student, which indicates to me that they might, I don't know where they are in their program, but they potentially, and this is a grasping at straws for just some sort of a rationale, right? Potentially would be, you know, if, if they're not done with their program and wanted to continue on, that'd be fantastic, but they also might have a, you know, be at a point in their program where they'd be looking, I mean, again, this is.
That's fine, I mean, I think we, we literally just sort of like threw, threw a coin up in the air.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
All right, we're good. All right, so, for the Human Rights Commission, the three vacancies to fill a three-year term, we will have Suyan, could I get a motion for, to appoint Suyan Cannon? Ahmad Ismail? And Badri Kuku? And then for the one-year, I'm sorry, for the one vacancy for an unexpired term upon appointment through December thirty-first, 2024, I also will need a motion to appoint. And you said it better than I did.
Janavi Pandya.
Janavi Pandya.
Yep.
Could I get a motion, please, to appoint them as mentioned?
So moved, Alter.
Move by Alter, seconded by?
Harmsen.
Harmsen, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion, motion passes six to zero. Fourteen E, Parks and Rec Commission. Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies to fill a four-year term, January first, 2023, through December thirty-first, 2026. Council discussion. I will point out that, I mean, this is another one where there is a lot of, a lot of great applicants. Rachel McPherson, one, she's a phenomenal person, and has a lot of, I think she can contribute a lot to this commission, but I also wanted to point out that, and this isn't giving her any advantage here, but McPherson Park, that is James McPherson Park, that's her father. She was very involved with a lot of the things that took for, that took place with the renaming of that park. I think she'll be a great candidate for this park. And while I'm also just throwing out names, I will just throw out Dolores Mixon, I, you know, looked at her application. What we're used to seeing on applications, hers just didn't actually have, so I've talked to her about her application, she called, and I think she called the majority of us, if not all of us. And I think she would also be a great person to be on the, on this commission. Other names?
I agree with you as well, Mayor, but I would also, just to sort of throw out another name for, just to talk over, if nothing else, to say, wow, this is a really interesting individual, is Erin Broge, or Broge. And I believe that he came up before us in an earlier cycle of Parks and Rec, and this may not be his cycle either, but I just, I think he has a lot of interesting experience that, that would be very suitable. So, just to make it so that it, you know, because we didn't have enough to talk about in the last commission, so I just, I would bring that up.
And the gender balance requirement here is one female and one nun.
Right.
Any other names to throw out?
The, the only other name I'd throw out sort of for consideration is sort of bringing somewhat into the fold is Karen Crane.
I was also considering her. She seemed to have a really good understanding of the commission.
Any other names? So we have. Four names, three females and one male. So maybe we'll start with the non first, and then see where we end up. Well, I think we can probably just go through all the names and see where we end up. So Erin Broge. Karen Crane, and I guess I'm looking for people that support.
Oh.
So I'll go through all the, I'll go through, let me go through all four names one more time. I'll go through all four names one more time. So Erin Broge, Karen Crane, Rachel McPherson, Dolores Mixon. So, we only get two votes. So Erin Broge.
Mayor, would it make more sense to go ask each of us what our top two are?
Oh, that works, it's only four, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll start on the, well, we're gonna start with you.
All right, okay.
And then we're going to you, Mayor Protem.
I would say Rachel McPherson and Karen Crane.
All right.
And I'll go out of order and say I agree.
And I will also say, those are my top two, Crane, and I like your argument about McPherson, that's, that's kind of interesting, nice connection there. So Crane and McPherson for me.
Your idea just went down the drain, but all right.
All right, I tried.
You didn't follow the rules.
All right.
I, I would have gone with McPherson and Mixon.
Okay.
So overlap, but not exactly the same.
And ultimately, that's who I would have, or will support, I guess, or.
So.
My choices were, were the same as Sean's.
All right, so McPherson, I, I support, so that makes it. Mixon, I have, so that's three, and then it's three for Karen Crane. And we're kinda, so, which is, is narrowed down, so I guess the question is, where do we wanna be? So, anyone willing to flop?
I'll tell you that, you know, I don't, I don't feel strongly, but the, the main reason that I put forward Karen Crane is because of, of all the, the folks who have been dealing with the, the swimming and the pools and so forth, and discussions with her, and also seeing her outside in the community, I've, were really able to, to talk with her and, and have conversations, and I thought it'd be really good to have somebody who seemed, could, could have those conversations as part of the process. And that was why I was interested in her.
That was also why I was interested in her.
And I don't know, because she had so little, and I did not end up talking to her, I don't know anything about Dolores Mixon, because it was very, it was really.
I guess from that same vantage point, that was partially, I know Dolores, and, I mean, she will throw all in to, you know, get involved and to understand what's going on, but she also has a voice and some experience throughout the city, in, in groups that, that typically Parks and Rec doesn't really reach. So, that's part of the reason why I think that her interest is really important, and her voice.
I'll switch to Dolores.
Okay. So we have a switch to Dolores, which, that's the majority there.
Yep.
So, for Parks and Rec Commission, could I get a motion to appoint Rachel McPherson and Dolores Mixon?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second, Weiner.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. We are on to Public Art Advisory Committee. Item number fourteen F. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill a three-year term, January first, 2023, through December thirty-first, 2025. Council discussion.
There's only one, it had to be a female, and the only person of the two who was also well-qualified.
Yes.
Going to serve again is Andrea Truitt.
Yep.
Yep.
I agree.
It's fantastic.
And, and this is one of those examples where there's, they served an unexpired term, or they took over a term. So this would be an opportunity for a full term, which council typically has leaned towards, but not all the time. So I can support, and it sounds like majority is there, so. Could I get a motion to appoint Andrew Truitt to the Public Art Advisory Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Taylor, seconded by Burgess, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item number fifteen is announcements of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December thirty-first, 2023. Applications must be received by five PM Tuesday, January third, 2023. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Burgess, seconded by Weiner. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item number sixteen is announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, and that's for East College Street. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by five PM Tuesday, January third, 2023. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, HBA Representative, or qualified by experience or training, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, Licensed Plumber, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Senior Center Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number seventeen is city council information.
Yeah, I had the, the, the great pleasure of attending the, the Iowa National Guard's sort of civilian. I had the, the great pleasure of attending the, the Iowa National Guard's sort of civilian leadership day this, this morning, really learned a tremendous about, about the National Guard, the huge amount, actually, of federal funding that comes into it, the, that they don't just work overseas, and they, they were instrumental in helping out, and particularly in Cedar Rapids after the derecho, clearing roads so that then, to allow the utility companies to get in afterwards. And I think the piece that many of us may not realize is how much work they did during COVID. There, it was their headquarters in Des Moines that was ended up, was used as the command center, including for the governor. They were busy transporting tests all the way by air, all the way from Sioux City to the hygienic lab in Coralville. They were, they, they actually did a huge amount of work in COVID. So really helpful and informative session.
I'd like to remind folks that this Thursday, the 17th, is the Employee Appreciation Lunch from 11:00 to 1:00 at Terry True Blood Recreation Area. I hope to see many of our city employees there. It's always been very enjoyable to do that, and we've kind of had a few years not doing it. So each, each and every one of you employees, those that are listening and, and then hear this broadcast, you, you play a valuable part in the city's ability to provide necessary services to the community, and I look forward to seeing as many as I can this Thursday. And just a quick note, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that it's my granddaughter's birthday, eight-year-old birthday, and so happy birthday to her. I don't know if she's watching, but save me a piece of cake.
Well, last Thursday, on the 10th, there was the Better Together 2030, I'm forgetting the name of the event, where they gave out the Bravo and Sizzle Awards. That was just a really, really good event, really good time, and a number of city employees and community leaders and volunteers who were recognized there. So it's just exciting to see the work that so many put into Project Better Together that came out of COVID, moving forward and really keeping energy going.
On Friday, there was the Truth Giving at the Inglert, and that was put on by Great Plains Action Society, which is, the executive director is Takawas Novas, who is on our Truth and Reconciliation Commission. This was really a great organized event. There were people from out of the state that came in to share some stories, but the music was phenomenal. People were dancing the night away, and so was I. It was, it was a lot of, it was a great time of both history telling, as well as enjoying some of the tribal music. All right. No other comments? Looking above to the voice in the air. Our Mayor Protem. All right, we'll go on to item number 18, which is a report on items from city staff. We'll start with our city manager's office.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
City attorney's office.
One brief housekeeping matter, Mayor. You may recall that at your last meeting, you deferred the UI Labor Center agreement to this meeting. There were some kind of late-breaking request to changes, and so as a result, we weren't ready to bring it forth today. We hope to have it for you at your December 6 meeting. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. City clerk?
Nothing from us. Thanks.
All right, awesome. Item number 19 is adjournment. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.